Order Sam and uh would you please?
I can.
Read the rule.
Sure, just give me one second.
Recall the rule.
All right. All right, so Chester Cindy Cindy Lignar.
Morning.
Oh, she's good morning. She just joined us. All right.
Yep.
Uh Clinton Michelle Bienvenia, she is joining us by the car from the car. Thank you. Cromwell Anthony Salvatore.
Here.
He is here. Uh Deep River, Carol Doc Jones.
Uh here.
Uh Durham Brendan Ray, I don't think he has joined us yet. Um East Haddam Irene Haynes, I have not seen her yet. Um East Hampton David Cox.
I'm here.
Uh Essex, uh Nor Medelman or Carrie Duquesne. I don't see Carrie or Norm. Uh Haddam, Robert McGarry. Oh, he has joined us. He is here. Uh Killingworth Eric Couture.
Hello.
He is here. Um Lime David Long.
Here.
Uh Middlefield Jim Irish.
Good morning.
Welcome. Uh Middletown, I do not see Mayor Ben Florsheim. Uh Old Line Martha Shoemaker. Is she here? I don't think so. Um Portland, uh oh no, Old Saybrook Carl Fortuna. I don't see him. And Portland Michael Pelton. He is here. And then Westbrook John Hall.
Morning.
Good morning. Uh for the for the MPO, we have Darlene Briggs from the Millsix County Chamber of Commerce.
Good morning.
And we have Joe Commerford from the SRA Trans District. Uh welcome.
Morning.
We also um have a guest today, a guest speaker Stephen Hall from Connecticut DOT. Uh we also have Samuel Bean from Connecticut DOT and our and our cog liaison Grayson Wright from Connecticut DOT.
Hey, good morning everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh we also have Aaron McBride from Senator Murphy's office, Ellen Graham from Senator Blumenthal's office. Um, let's see. Any other, any other guests? I think that's it for guests. Um, oh, and Julia um uh is coming from Representative Courtney's office. Um, so I'll just introduce Riverco staff. I'm Sam Gold. We're joined by uh today with uh Eliza LaPresty, Brendan Garrity, um Megan Juflis, Rob Harramit, uh Susie Beckman, um uh Marcus Gonzalez and uh Janice Earl Meyer, um Margot Burns, um and Kevin Armstrong. Um, did I miss anyone? And if I did, please introduce yourself.
Brendan.
Oh, Brendan, Brendan Garrity uh from Riverco. Okay, that uh the introductions, the role had been called.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Uh, let's move on to public speaking and you have Carolyn's report.
Yeah, uh yeah, Carol sends her regrets. She is homesick uh with a pretty bad cold. Um, and so she didn't want to be uh be on the phone or camera, but she's given, she checked in the report. So please feel free to convey that I have been, I've still been working with newer registrars on their canvas responsibilities, annual mailing and working with towns using their new voting equipment for the referendums. Some are waiting for November to use the new equipment. Uh, there was new equipment training yesterday in Old Saybrook and many of our cog towns had representation there. Um, and anyone is welcome to contact her. Um, we can give you her number uh if you have any questions for her or you need her to help out your staff. So that's Carol, uh Carol Conklin's report.
Okay, thanks, Sam. Uh Senator Blumenthal's office.
Yes, good morning. Um, so I will say that we are currently accepting um applications for the congressionally directed spending program for 2026. Yeah, so uh the deadline for that is Sunday, April 27th. If you have any questions, please reach out and um I will connect you with um the best person to answer your questions. Um, we are currently waiting for a budget for this fiscal year. Um, and always please keep us informed of any cutbacks, reductions or um recisions of any federal funding that you hear. Um, it's important for us to know that because sometimes we are not hearing about it ourselves. That is my update.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Like ask a question. So um uh uh member directed spending was cut out of the continuing resolution that's currently in effect, so. Um, is there, you know? What is the, I know you can't tell us what the likelihood that these will be funded, but has there been any um any message from leadership in either house uh that that in next year's budget that there that this actually may be funded? Or is this just, you know, in case they decide to fund these?
Um, you know, I will defer to Aaron also, but I have not heard any sort of messaging around that. Um. Aaron, I'm not sure if you guys have heard anything about it.
No, we haven't.
Yeah, it's big unknown. So I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Murphy's office, anything to add?
I would just echo what um Ellen said, but you know, um between today and Friday, if you guys have any questions, if you plan on applying for CDS, please feel free to send me an email or give me a call. I'm happy to quickly talk through. Um, you know, maybe what account is best to apply for? The one thing that we'll say as a precursor is that we have much more strict um caps this year than traditional years and um we are not anticipating as many projects being funded, if any, just given the state of Congress. So we always want to make sure that, you know, we're being um transparent in setting expectations. Well, that does not mean we're not going to try and submit as many projects as possible. We will continue to, you know, fight for your guys' projects. Um, we just want to make sure we're setting a realistic landscape of um what this congressionally directed spending fiscal year might look like. Um, but other than that, I just, you know, as always, keep us posted. If you have a federal funding, um, you know, grant that's frozen or if you have a grant that's rescinded everything from humanities to like, you know, transportation, everything and anything, that's important for all of our offices to know. Um, so I think just keeping, you know, Julia, me and Ellen posted is always is super helpful. We're here to answer questions as much as we can. We don't always have the answers, but we are always happy to try and help to our um the best of our abilities, so.
Um, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, so I just put in the chat, um Governor Lamont uh announced um that they they created a reporting tool for reporting to the to the state any federal cuts. So I I want to make sure you you were aware that uh the governor's office was asking us to report that information.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And we're we're working um with uh their office actually to try and see how we can start um sharing data um across offices. Um, so we've already been in contact with his office and the comptrollers about this um since we are trying to not reinvent the wheel, make people duplicate their efforts. Um, but I know that we all have our own means of different um tracking for these things. So um I think going through one uniform place and Julia and Ellen, if you guys aren't connected, I'm sure I could always uh make sure I connect you with their office as well if that stuff is helpful for you guys.
Okay, thank you. Uh Representative Courtney's office.
Good morning. Um, just to echo what um Aaron said, we are also working through our uh fiscal year 26 um community project funding process at the moment. We are resubmitting our 15 projects from last year, so we are not soliciting any new applications. Um, all 15 of ours were cut from the full year continuing resolution. So we are working um to just resubmit those hoping maybe we can get them at a high, at a higher, you know, allocation than we did last time. Although things are pretty precarious, so anybody who is uh on board with us for that, I think at this point understands that it's a little bit of a leap of faith. Um. Couple other things I wanted to highlight for this group next Wednesday, April 30th, is the deadline um for treasury for um counties, local units of government um and um the non entitlement units of recipients of state and local fiscal recovery funds to submit project and expenditure reports. Um. This is required for all any use. The um I believe the only metropolitan um uh recipient in this group is Middletown and that deadline has already passed. Um, uh Treasury under this newest administration has made it clear that they are going to be very rigorous when reviewing um these um uh reports, so do your best that you can to be as detailed as possible. Um, also a couple other things to keep track of. We are still working through the budget reconciliation process. One thing we are continuing to track is um potential impacts to Medicaid. I included a couple of resources from the National Association of County um governments that um is really helpful for um regional and local governments on, you know, what to look forward. Um, there is some concern about a proposal that came out to eliminate the tax exempt status on municipal bonds, which would not be great for local units of government. Um, it is at this point, according to our legislative team, considered one of the less likely things to end up occurring as a way to, I I guess the thinking behind it as is a way to bring in more revenue for the federal government so they can um cut other things elsewhere. Um, however, it will be deeply unpopular across basically every community. However, I I would still recommend always advocating for things like that regardless, because who knows? But um just something to put on your radar. Um, also, Congress this year is um considering the reauthorization of the state and local cybersecurity program. If your um community has benefited from that program through SISA, you might want to reach out and express that to Congress um to your to your members. Um. Health and Human Services just um announced a pretty big restructuring. They have um consolidated several agencies into one and are also um potentially thinking about um cutting some programs that we're concerned about. We are tracking that, but you may, if you um your health districts or other um uh entities are receiving HHS funding, it's possible you may experience interruptions. Again, if you do, feel free to let us know. Um. Uh, the BRIC program from FEMA is being terminated entirely. Um. Uh, that is disappointing. Um. We are trying to track that as quickly as possible uh or as closely as possible. Um. They are, so there was a fiscal year 24 NOFO out. It is being rescinded. That money will not be up for competition. And then according to FEMA, they are um going to tr- try to take back fiscal year 20 through 23, although there has been some uh further uh caveats that have come out that they may work with some projects um on a case by case basis. Um, we have about 30 million active dollars of BRIC money in the state uh that will probably, I'm not sure how much quite impacts uh this group specifically, but that is something we'll be working through. We also saw some terminations of mental health and behavioral programs that would go to the um uh local health districts, including the community mental health uh uh services block grant supplement and the substance use prevention, treatment and recovery supplements, which um in our area are mostly used to support uh distribution of Narcan um and peer support services. CEQ is issuing a final rule on potentially rolling back some NEPA regulations, which we are watching with a particularly close eye, because while it is certainly a priority to protect the environment, I think it's well understood by most people who work on infrastructure projects that there is likely a better way to do this than the way that um NEPA has become very burdensome. So we're watching that closely. Um, and also USDA uh has announced that they are canceling the Partnerships for Climate Smart Communities program um due to misalignment with current administration priorities. Um, they will honor all expenses, um eligible expenses incurred prior to April 13th. Um, we do have um uh some funding within um the state uh that impacts our agricultural producers and small businesses. Um, so we're tracking that pretty closely. If you're hearing from any farmers or other, um, you know, people in the ag sector, feel free to send them our way. Um, that is it for me today as of this moment. Um, but I will just echo what um Aaron said and, you know, please do not assume that we know anything that you do. Feel free to share anything with us. You're not bothering us. Um, we are very much tracking things via grassroots at the moment, so you know, we are an open channel of communication for anything you got.
Um, I have a question for Julia.
Go ahead, Sam.
Um, we received a grant through BRIC for our update of our natural hazard mitigation plans. Um, this is a fiscal year 23 um funding uh from the fed federal government. And, you know, this is more, I guess, an issue for Demis and I see Nicole Verlardi for um was joining us, although she's, you know, not, this is not her forte. Um. Um, we've been trying to get information regarding um whether that grant still exists or not. Yeah, we haven't, we haven't got, we we have a, we have a contract with Demis. We haven't been informed by Demis that uh that the that the grant is canceled. I don't think they've been informed. Um, and so, you know, it's it's kind, it's you know, when when everyone has contracts and yet and there's, but there's no stop work order. It it raises a lot of questions, like will they pay up to the point that they issue a stop work order?
For sure. Um, so this is something that uh we are also trying to figure out. There with that clarification, well, it wasn't very clarifying, but with the further information that came from FEMA, um, they did say um uh for certain, if grant funds have not yet been drawn down by recipients, they will um be rescinded either back to um DHS or back to Treasury. I don't think they've decided exactly where they're, they want that money to go yet. Um. What I don't know is, so for for BRIC in Connecticut, as you know, it goes to the state and then out to local um, you know, partners. What happens if it's in that between? I'm trying to figure out and I don't have clarity at the moment on that. Um. For those, for the money that you i- is allocated to you for the um planning, is it in a bank account that you that is um for Rivercog or is it still with the state at the moment?
Um, uh, I assume it's still with the state. Uh, we don't have this money yet. Um, uh, but um we are trying to figure out our strategy. Do we try to get as much work done until we get a stop work order? Or do we um or instead, do we hold off signing any contracts? So I've seen Nicole from Demis is.
Yeah.
Yeah, happy, happy to chime in, um though unfortunately probably not going to give you any information that hasn't already been said. Um, you should have, if you were a recipient, you should either have already or will be soon receiving email communications from our BRIC program administrator. That would be either Vin O'Neill or Ken Dumis. Um, giving kind of just a general guidance, um but essentially what we're telling everybody is if you don't have the money in account already, be prepared to not receive that money. Um, now, as it was already said, everything back through, was it 2020 or 2021, is being assessed and is in jeopardy of the funding being deobligated. Uh, so you know, not great news. We don't like it either, I promise. Uh, you know, we are big proponents for the BRIC program. We think it does a lot of great things for our state and has brought a lot of money and um mitigation measures. Um, but that's, you know, the unfortunate circumstance that we're in right now. Additionally, if it was a phased project, um the guidance we have is that whatever phase it's in, that's the last phase it will be in. Uh, funding will not be allocated to continue to the next phase.
So Sam.
Yep.
Uh, one thing for the the our BRIC, our planning grant is that it's a reimbursable grant. So we would never have all the money in an account that for Rivercog until we spend it. And so my question is, does, is that the same for the state? Does the state, is it a is the grant reimbursable from the federal government to the state and not the the did FEMA give all the money that have a state receipt into a state account? Or do?
Uh, so it's it's the same way for us. When we receive the reimbursement, we process it on our end uh to make sure, you know, it's within the scope of what was approved uh and make, you know, check for eligibility and then we submit for FEMA so that FEMA can issue the payment to us and we issue it to the subgrantee, which in this case would be Rivercog. Um, so to my knowledge, it is not all sitting with the state. If so, um, we would be doing whatever we could to get that kind of out to the grant recipients as fast as we could. Um, I do know that our deputy commissioner is working with our agency CFO uh to come up with a statement and some from further guidance, I'll say, uh for all of our grantees, because BRIC was unfortunately terminated, but the sense that we're getting from FEMA and the notice that they have given us is that essentially all of our grant programs could be on the chopping block. Um. Which is a lot of money to the local communities uh and, you know, can be of significant concern. So there will, I did push something out um last week, but expect some additional communications. Um, our state emergency management director is working with all of the other state emergency management directors and several professional agencies to try and get more information out of FEMA. The guidance we're getting is pretty broad in general, as I'm sure you all have seen. Uh, so we're trying to get some more specifics and and clarification on what this all means. And thus far, we've been unsuccessful, but as soon as we have more information, uh we will share it with everybody that we can.
Sam, I think the wise thing to do is um uh until we get a definitive answer that uh any BRIC spending should actually be curtailed.
Yeah. Yeah, I know that.
Uh, because we we may be on the hook for the expenditures.
Yeah.
If you have um work that has been done and has not been requested for reimbursement, I would recommend that you get that paperwork in order and submit it as quickly as possible so we can try and process it uh before there's, you know, further changes.
But you would, you would agree that um possibly we shouldn't go forward until we get a definitive answer on which way this is going.
Uh, yes, our our recommendation from the deputy commissioner is that if you have projects that have significant federal funding, uh if be prepared to not receive that funding.
I have one more, I have one more question for this. So if we don't proceed with trying to get the natural hazard mitigation plan done on time, which is September 2026, what happens if our plan come, goes out of date? Um, when it comes to federal funding for um for natural disasters?
Um, I don't have an answer for that. I'm happy to consult our mitigation specialists and get an answer for that. I am hopeful that because it would be a result of this um funding or syndication, that there would be exceptions and extensions made to allow time to make up for, you know, this inconvenience, but I'm happy to follow up with them and and get you an answer on that.
Good to be positive for a while.
Uh, thanks Nicole. We appreciate any assistance.
Absolutely. And if there's any ever uh ever any questions, you can always shoot me an email, give me a call. I'm happy to either give you an answer or find you an answer.
Thank you. Uh, Sam, would you note that Carl and Irene have joined us?
Okay, okay. Great.
Uh. Any additional comments at this time or we'll move on? Okay, uh. Kevin, update on the vendor for the phone system, alarms and cameras?
Yes, uh, just just a quick public service announcement. Um, Riverco's phone vendor IP Genie um has recently changed hands and is now CCI Voice. Um, and I just wanted to uh uh announce out to the group that they they are under a capital region cog purchasing agreement and they are extending that out. Um, they're now going from a six man team to a a 30 plus man team. Um, so they are looking to expand their services to other customers, including towns. Um, so anything in the areas?
I know. Oh. Yeah, immediate you, Carl.
That's okay. Um, so uh anything in the areas of video surveillance? So that includes uh regular video surveillance systems, ballot box cams, um anything in that realm, um sensors, so motion sensors, uh temperature sensors for HVAC or food safety, like in schools for freezers. Um, anything for access security, if you have issues with keyless entry or you need to have auditable doors so that you know who's coming and going and at what times to what facilities. Um, all of these solutions are offered in two formats, the traditional format where you outright buy the hardware and own it. Or they're offering all of this as a service, so it's a monthly charge and you don't actually have to purchase the devices. So like, for instance, in the case of a uh one off ballot box camera, if you're still having those issues, um, you could purchase a single camera at a monthly expense and store all of that footage in the cloud and not have to own any physical hardware. Um, so what I'm suggesting today to all of you, um either from yourselves or from your technology folks, reach out to me. I'd like to be the buffer between your staff and the sales folks to just figure out if the solution fits before we go involving the sales team. Um, so if any of you have any of those issues, feel free to reach out to me.
Okay, any, any questions for Kevin? Okay, thank you. Uh, Rob, would you like to uh introduce our guest Stephen Hall in uh the update on Route 9?
Oh, yeah, yep. Well, we have invited uh Stephen Hall, project manager for the uh Route 9 uh project, uh just to come in and uh give you a brief presentation on where things stand.
Uh, thank you, Rob. I'm gonna try and share myself, sorry.
No, I said welcome. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, hopefully everyone's seeing my screen.
Yes, we do.
Okay, great. So again, my name is Stephen Hall and the project manager for uh not only the removal of the traffic signals on Route 9, but the other five projects that have been completed or in construction or design in downtown Middletown. And with me is Sam Bean, who's my project engineer, and then we have Grayson Wright, who are, is our cog liaison. So I'm gonna go over a, I have a four minute video that gives a pretty good um comprehensive view of the project we're talking about. I'll talk about our public outreach summary to date, some of the traffic operations, which really are the core uh issue with this project, the safety benefits, and then some of our environmental investigations, and then I'll open it up for questions. I've committed to 20 minutes, so I'll I'll do my best at keeping it at that.
The city of Middletown, Connecticut is a beautiful and diverse city. With the return to the Riverbend Development, iconic Main Street and vibrant North End, the city is experiencing rapid growth. Solutions must be found to improve safety, reduce congestion and enhance the connectivity to the Connecticut River along the Route 9 corridor and Main Street Middletown. Enhancements recently constructed or under construction in the area are already improving safety, traffic flow and accessibility for all users. Today, the presence of two traffic signals along a short stretch of Route 9 leads to a high number of wrong way entrances, crashes and injuries. On average, this short stretch experiences a crash every other day with an injury once a week. Congestion along Route 9 and over the Aragoni Bridge also encourages detours through the North End, a dense residential neighborhood full of children and pedestrians. To address these issues, a series of projects has been initiated to make the roadway a safe and more efficient experience for all users. Let's take a closer look at the future improvements. South of the Route 17 interchange and just north of Walnut Street, a new right hand off ramp will be constructed to get vehicles from Route 9 northbound to destinations downtown and across the river. This off ramp will intersect with River Road in a three leg roundabout, which will naturally reduce speeds, improve safety, decrease the possibility of wrong way entrances and create a gateway feature to the riverfront. Vehicles on River Road will connect to Union Street by means of a reconfigured intersection at Harbor Drive, prioritizing the vehicles exiting Route 9. A right turn lane will be added to Union Street to help encourage vehicles to use Decoven Drive for connection to the Aragoni Bridge and Route 66. Further north, the new pedestrian bridge over Route 9 will be a community space at the heart of the city's redevelopment plans that will connect downtown to the riverfront. To improve safety and eliminate wrong way entrances at the intersection of Route 9, Decoven Drive and Washington Street, the signal will be removed and the operations will be simplified. Access to Route 9 southbound will remain, while the northbound and southbound exits to Washington Street are being removed. Rapallo Avenue will be converted to one way towards Main Street to prioritize the Decoven Drive to Rapallo Avenue Route to the Aragoni Bridge while maintaining all on-street parking and sidewalks. This will improve operations of Rapallo while also improving the pedestrian crossing safety at Main Street. To improve safety and reduce wrong way entrances at the Hartford Avenue and Route 9 intersection, the signal will be removed and the southbound lanes will be elevated. This will greatly improve driver safety and decrease congestion along the Route 9 corridor in the North End and across the Aragoni Bridge. Drivers entering northbound Route 9 from St. John's Square will be afforded plenty of time to accelerate to highway speeds with a new lane extending all the way to Route 99 in Cromwell. Throughout the network, these design enhancements work together to improve safety for all users, reduce congestion and create a more efficient downtown. This project and others like the new pedestrian bridge will allow a growing Middletown to reconnect with the riverfront and destinations beyond.
Okay, so jumping into our. Okay, so jumping into our public outreach summary, we've done quite a bit. Um, we had two public workshops in February of twenty twenty-four. We have eighteen different alternatives that we've been looking at over the past eight years for uh, uh, honestly. Um, we had a Connecticut Environmental Policy Act scoping period from April sixteenth to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And then we had a formal public informational meeting on April thirtieth at Waylon University. Uh, we recorded dozens of verbal comments, and we also received eighty-seven formal written comments in the month following that meeting. We've had a very effective monthly recurring meeting uh, with the Middlesex Chamber of Commerce, with business owners, emergency services, and chief elected officials of Middletown, Portland, East Hampton, and Cromwell. Uh, we presented to the Middletown delegation back in August of twenty twenty-four. We presented to uh, Rob and Sam back in September of twenty twenty-four. And then we recently met with the Common Council of Middletown on January thirty-first. So I think the main concern, you know, there really isn't much question about the need for a safety improvement downtown. The main concern about is is what are the traffic operations as a result of this project? So there's a, there's a belief and a concern that their proposed reduction in access points and the rerouting of northbound vehicles would create more congestion downtown, which could perhaps increase cut-through traffic and damage the business community. Um, however, it's really that current configuration of access that causes that congestion and really directly leads to uh, someone to cut through traffic downtown. So what I'm showing here is a a micro-simulation model. It's called VISM, which basically is modeling um, the existing conditions projected out to twenty forty-five. We do this for regional growth and planned developments like the Brainerd Place development, and it's showing kind of some of the congestion issues we have. So you know, obviously, we see some congestion on Route nine at the signal up at Hartford Avenue. We see some congestion south on Route nine. Um, this is the AMP period, by the way. But really, we see this tremendous amount of congestion over the Aragoni Bridge. Um, and that is caused by the signal at Hartford Avenue that really backs up um, traffic on Hartford Avenue and allow and forces the signal at St. John's Square to really not operate efficiently. Additionally, with the access we have from Route nine southbound and northbound to Washington Street, and the heavy volume coming down Washington, we see a of poor, poor operations on that location as well. And really, what what these operations do is what we've learned is it's it forces a lot of people to take alternate routes um, through the downtown network. So what we're looking at here is the results of our origin destination study. So we take open source cell phone data to try and figure out where vehicles are coming from and where they're going to. So beyond just counting turns at each individual intersection, given the number of different routes that people can and do take to get through Middletown, we needed to see exactly what path they were taking. And and this information was rather startling. So up top, we see, um, again, this is the no build condition. We see a common route from Route nine north to the Aragoni Bridge. One of the main concerns people have is by removing the access at Hartford Avenue, are we not going to increase traffic downtown? And what we see is only three out of four people in the morning that are heading from Route nine south to the Aragoni Bridge actually take Hartford Avenue. And some staggering numbers like twenty percent of all vehicles in the morning will get off at Bow Lane, take Saybrook Road and travel down Main Street to avoid that congestion we see on Route nine. Looking at the reverse direction from the Aragoni Bridge to Route nine south, we would expect that people coming over the Aragoni Bridge would take St. John's Square onto Hartford Avenue and then Route nine southbound. But we only see between sixty-nine and eighty-two percent of vehicles using that route with a staggering, you know, eight to seventeen percent of vehicles that due to the congestion on Hartford Avenue will actually continue down Main Street and take Saybrook Road to get to Route nine south. Uh, we have many other of these figures as well, but these two, I think, sit out the most to me. Because this really shows that the congestion we see downtown, all those vehicles we see downtown are vehicles that really want to be on Route nine, but given the traffic operations or the crash every other day, injury once per week, opt for that local roadway network instead. So now looking at the record simulation model for the proposed design, you see we have the new roundabout at exit twenty-three. Um, we've removed the northbound access from Route nine to Hartford Avenue. We've removed the Route nine southbound access to Washington as well as the northbound access to Washington. This also takes into consideration all those vehicles that were using the downtown network, and we pulled them back into Route nine, given the efficiency of that route. So we certainly see free-flow movement on Route nine, which is to be expected with the removal of the traffic signals. But also, we see no congestion over the Aragoni Bridge. And that's because by removing the signal uh, on Route nine, we no longer have any kind of backup or queue on Hartford Avenue that allows the signal at St. John's Square to operate much more effectively. So now vehicles heading over the Aragoni Bridge, looking to get on Route nine south, have no reason or drive to use the downtown network unless, of course, they want to stop off and get a coffee or something like that. They can simply get on Hartford Avenue and without heading any signals, get onto Route nine southbound. One of the outputs we have as well is travel time. So we take very common travel routes, and from that model, we can anticipate um, or we can, we can determine how long it would take today, or I should say, you know, in twenty forty-five if we do nothing, and then what the proposed route would be. So this is kind of a way to take that video with main travel route in question. This is the the travel path from Route nine north to the Aragoni Bridge. Again, there's a big concern that by removing the access to Hartford Avenue, we're going to get more congestion downtown. So we see in twenty forty-five in the no build condition. So if we don't remove the traffic signals, it's about a six-point-one minute movement in the AM and seven-point-one in the PM. And that's taking Hartford Avenue. That's the red line you see here. Now, the proposed condition would be the light blue line, and that would be getting off exit twenty-three, taking the roundabout up Union Street, taking a right onto Coben Drive, up Rapallo, and over the Aragoni Bridge. So we see that that's a seven-point-four minute movement in the AM and seven-point-five in the PM. It's worth noting that of all the other travel paths we looked at, this is the only one that actually degrades. The rest all get better. But it's also worth noting that, you know, for a one, one and a half minute uh, extension in the travel time, we're getting rid of that crash every other day, that injury once per week. Additionally, and this has been one of the best outcomes of that coordination we've done with the Chamber of Commerce and the and the municipalities, is since we only now have that one main access point from Route nine north over the Aragoni Bridge, we looked at adding another route, right? So if we look further to the north, exit twenty-five in Cromwell, right now, we have a a rather odd intersection with free-flow movements off exit twenty-five. One of our proposed designs is to add a three-leg roundabout there. Since we've gotten rid of the two traffic signals on Route nine, this now becomes a very viable route, especially for trucks. We're gonna, you know, try and sign this as the preferred truck route for vehicles to go past the Aragoni Bridge, do a free-flow U-turn back onto Route nine south, and then get up and over to the Aragoni Bridge. So that movement now becoming a lot more viable, we're looking at eight-point-three minutes in the AM and nine in the PM. So this is also going to be useful for incident management. If there is a parade or something downtown, we've been coordinating with the police department in Middletown for some of their common closures, and we've actually modeled that as well to see how exactly it would operate if Main Street's closed down, if there's an incident onto Coben Drive, uh, things of that nature. So getting into safety, I think one of the, one of the core tenants is that humans make mistakes. And this is actually, we were doing a drone video to calibrate our model to make sure it actually accurately captured the existing conditions. And you see, given this confusing intersection, this car almost went the wrong way onto Route nine north. Um, this, we were only out here for a couple hours. Um, this vehicle was was certainly confused. Luckily, it was daytime. Luckily, um, you know, nobody was injured. But I think it's worth noting that this doesn't show up on any crash data. This is not recorded anywhere. Um, but these are things that that certainly happen more than once. Um, and that's because of this large intersection we have. Um, we have a signal onto Coben Drive and Route nine, and really, our goal is to uh, design to minimize human mistakes, because humans will make mistakes. And one of the ways we do that is through uh, some of the FHWA proven safety countermeasures such as corridor access management. So that refers to the design, application, and control of entry and exit points along a roadway. You know, the the reason why we only have two signals on any state freeway is because we try and control the access to and from interstates. Uh, when we have too much access, a lot of times we have safety issues like the video you saw before. So thoughtful access management can enhance safety for all modes, facilitate walking and biking, and reduce trip delay and congestion. And FHWA, some of you, it's called a proven safety countermeasure because they've been studied before and after, and we see a twenty-five to thirty-one percent reduction in fatal injury crashes along arterials. And really, the goal of the FHWA Safe Systems Approach is that death and serious injury must be avoided at all costs. So we're really focusing on those serious crashes, uh, those fa- those fatal crashes and seeing what we can do to minimize those. Um, and a lot of that is doing at conflict points, right? So conflict points are locations where travel paths of users intersect. Uh, and that directly impacts the safety and performance of the intersection. And there's, there's three major types of conflict points. We have a crossing or like a a T-bone type crash, a converging, which would be like a side swipe, and a diverging rear end. Now, um, the crossing-type angle-type crashes are the most severe, right? So when you have perpendicular routes hitting each other, when you have a T-bone type crash, that's where we see a much higher percentage of death and serious injury, whereas side swipes and rear ends have a much lower uh, percentage of those. So looking at the existing intersection of Washington Street and Route nine and Decoven Drive, what this is is a diagram of all the different movements and all the different um, um, intersecting, crossing, converging, diverging points. So we have seventeen crossing conflicts in this intersection, seven converging and six diverging. So when you look at all the different movements that could be made, similar to that video I just showed, there's a lot of locations where we could have a a high uh, probability of injury, angle-type crash. Looking at the proposed condition, once we incorporate some of that corridor access management, we dramatically reduce that to eight crossing points, six converging and five diverging. So by reducing the access that we have by simplifying this intersection, we can dramatically reduce the probability of a serious type crash. Same same kind of diagram, looking at Hartford Avenue where we have the Route nine northbound access to the Aragoni Bridge, we see twelve crossing points, and really what what stands out about these is these are high-speed movements, right? So um, you know, you have a vehicle traveling on Route nine south, perhaps runs that red light, someone, you know, runs a right, taking a left on red, uh, that can be a very serious type crash that we've unfortunately seen quite a bit. So we have twelve crossing points, four converging, and and one diverging. In the proposed design, by elevating Route nine southbound over Hartford Avenue, and by turning this from an accurate intersection to a grade-separated interchange, we have zero conflict points. So you know, we have a much safer condition where we're not having high-speed vehicles crossing uh, low-speed vehicles. We've reduced that speed differential and made this a lot safer. Another key um, countermeasure around abouts, I mentioned, we have two proposed roundabouts in the project. Converting a signalized intersection to a roundabout has shown seventy-eight percent reduction in fatal crashes and injuries. And we have thirty-three in the state currently, and we've been pulling data off these since they've been constructed, and we actually see an eighty-one percent in injury-type crashes and fatalities at these roundabouts. So uh, they can substantially reduce crashes that result in death and serious injury. They they can improve safety for all users, including pedestrians and bicyclists. They promote lower speeds and traffic calming, not by signage, but by the geometry and some of the context clues we have for a change in in context for the roadway. So the curvature that we have entering the roundabouts and throughout the roundabouts creates speeds between fifteen and twenty-five miles per hour. So as opposed to just putting a sign up that people can ignore, we create a geometric condition where it naturally gradually slows vehicles down. It dramatically reduces conflict points and overall leads to an improved operational performance of the intersection. So looking at the proposed design for the roundabout off exit twenty-three, one of the core tenants of roundabouts is there are no angle-type crashes. So you know, we have speeds down from fifteen to twenty-five miles per hour entering and circulating. If we do get a a crash, we generally see them as property damage only with no injuries. So we have three converging type crashes and two diverging. So if we do see crashes, the the probability of them being safer is dramatically improved. Moving on to environmental, um, National Environmental Policy Act, I know we just had a a brief statement about the Council of Environmental Quality, but we still are following, you know, the current standards of the of NEPA. Um, we are doing an additional environmental review to further evaluate the roundabout proposed at Route ninety-nine as well as a location to offset some floodplain impacts. Um, a regional air quality conformity evaluation is required, and that's really the reason I'm on the call today is uh, we need to get the project on the step to really initiate that regional air quality conformity. We're wrapping up a cultural resource evaluation to evaluate the entire project um, in terms of historic properties um, in 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 conjunction with the National Struck Preservation Act to make sure that nothing we do has any effects or adverse effects, and if so, is any mitigation required. This also takes a look at subsurface conditions to make sure we're not finding any relics or things of that nature in a town like Middletown on the Connecticut River. There certainly is a possibility for that. We did complete a noise analysis um, last fall, which determined that one noise wall um, along Route seventeen to Route nine south is feasible and reasonable. And part of this process is putting out a lot of noise receptors, taking a look at the existing conditions, what we expect and proposed. But then we also survey the adjacent property owners to make sure that they actually want. So we sent out surveys for this project and actually the the Route seventeen to Route nine north project. And a hundred percent of the the residents that were polled and surveyed were in favor of that uh, noise wall, so that will be constructed as part of this project. So project schedule and cost. So again, we're finalizing that cultural resource evaluation to complete our NEPA documentation. We expect to have that in the next few months, at which point uh, we will request design approval from federal highways to to begin our final design activities. The current schedule has final design plans completed of June of twenty twenty-six. The project would be advertised in August of twenty-six, and then notice to proceed, so the the start of when the contractor can be on board would be December twenty-first, twenty twenty-six. I will add a a rather large asterisk that um, based on some more information we're getting on permitting, we are looking to perhaps move this, um, but that hasn't been finalized yet. So certainly, any updates can be distributed through the Chamber of Commerce and then uh, River Cog as well. And the construction cost for this is one hundred forty-three million dollars. So at this point, that that concludes our presentation. Uh, any questions? I have the the project email address up, and then we have a website that we've recently put some work into. I have a QR code here as well as a link that has a lot of the information. It has more travel time figures, more origin destination destination figures, and you know, some more videos showing the um, the traffic operations based in our micro-micro-simulation model. Um, so I guess with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hall? I have my usual question. How are we making out with the ramp for Route nine off of ninety-nine?
Yeah, so um, I I figured you'd ask that, Tony. So we've coordinated with our project development unit, so we have a unit that basically looks at initiating projects. They've been investigating the Route three seventy-two intersection for quite some time. Uh, as we know, that's a very challenging location with lots of traffic, and one of the main reasons is because that's the sole access to Route nine north. So basically, they've taken what we were drafting up and incorporated that into that planning study to determine um, how that operates with both of those as well. So we have our our PDU unit, as we call them, uh, looking at that, you know, essentially, and and I'll pull up the color plan. What Tony's talking about is we have that roundabout at uh, Route ninety-nine up in Cromwell. Um, we're looking at the possibility of adding access up from uh, Route ninety-nine to Route nine north to try and alleviate some of that congestion we see on Route three seventy-two.
Stephen, I just have a quick question, if I can.
Exactly.
Uh, it's indirectly uh, connected to it. So once a project goes through, does it make sense to consider a roundabout when you come over the Aragoni Bridge? Uh, I know that intersection with the Brainerd Place project and some additional projects in town, does that affect traffic flow either over or coming from the other side?
So we have looked, there was a corridor study on Route seventeen in Portland uh, that did look at a roundabout. I don't believe the volumes worked out. One of the things we need to look at is balancing volumes. But I can say that that wouldn't have effects over the Aragoni Bridge. If if it did, um, that would, you know, that wouldn't be a viable solution. Um, so I can look into that corridor study some more and really dive into exactly what was looked at. But I do know that in the past, that location has been looked at to see if, you know, what are some viable options to try and improve the operations over in Portland.
Any other questions for uh, Mr. Hall?
Okay. I have, I have one question.
Okay.
Mr. Hall?
Go ahead.
How, how long will this project take?
So we expect probably four years construction. We haven't gotten that far into the stage of never yet. But one of the benefits we have of this configuration is that, you know, we can construct the roundabout at River Road completely offline without impacting traffic. We can maintain um, access over the River Road Bridge for emergency services, and we can essentially have this part of the project done without touching any of the Route nine traffic. Additionally, as we move further north by just simplifying Washington Street, um, there's really not going to be a whole lot of impacts there. What we have dove into is the staging of the Hartford Avenue uh, intersection with Route nine. And we do have a a conceptual plan to maintain two lanes of traffic in each direction. Um, so that really is the the key issue with the impacts that we would see to the local roadway network. Um, but again, a lot of this work being done offline certainly minimizes how long we have that exposure to vehicles.
Thank you.
I I think you can also agree that uh, out of all the attempts previously, this this is uh, this this is this is the closest we've come to removing those lights in all the years that that's been attempted.
Certainly, yeah, you know, in in two thousand and one, there was a study done by URS that really would, it would have eliminated the entire neighborhood at River Road. It was a billion dollar project. It really wasn't feasible. In two thousand and sixteen, we came back with a few options. In two thousand and eighteen, we came back. But yes, I would agree that this option here, I think, really is the is the best option we've had. And a lot of that is because we really dove in even deeper to the traffic operations. You know, we thought originally the volume of northbound vehicles would be too high to to do something like this. But when you see how many of those vehicles are bypassing Route nine, and then once you model that in, it really gives us great confidence that that this will not only dramatically improve the safety, but certainly improve the traffic operations as well.
Okay, anyone else with a question? Okay, Stephen, thank you very much. As always, excellent presentation. We appreciate the information being provided to us.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Okay, moving on, MPO business, approval of the minutes from March twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
John, second. I'm sorry, Michael, any corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Rob, uh, without objection, if we could look at B one through ten first?
Uh, yep, sure. Are you all set?
Yep.
All right, uh, yeah, we have quite a few tip amendments today. There are only three projects, but quite a few line items. Uh, the first is, uh, the first ten, uh, let's see here, is, uh, project seventy-nine to forty. This is a project you have seen a few times before. Initially, I had sent out all the the plans a while back with your packet. There was the the website, some of the Route nine website. We've done amendments before. There are two projects, one's a southbound, one's a northbound. This is the southbound project. It is interchange improvements at I ninety-one, I six ninety-one and Route fifteen. This is mostly in the south central region, but there is the section of I ninety-one from Meriden up to the rest area in Middletown that does affect us. I will go through quickly. I won't go through every, I mean, I'll go through all the line items, but I won't repeat it. It's a Meriden Middletown project, ninety-one, six ninety-one, fifteen. It's project number zero zero seven nine zero two forty NHPP funding, which is National Highway Performance Program Funding. It is in the air quality model. It's interchange improvements, like I said, southbound, eastbound and southbound. They are all the construction phases and most use the NHPP funding. An entry number one is a deletion of the twenty twenty-five AC entry. Item number two is a deletion of the twenty twenty-five AC conversion for six point two million. Item number three is a deletion of the twenty twenty-six conversion for two point five million. Number four is a deletion of the twenty twenty-seven conversion for two point five million. Item number five is a deletion of the twenty twenty-eight conversion for forty-seven point five million. Item number six is a deletion of the FYI conversion for forty-four point six million. Item number seven is, let's see here, a about a one million dollar decrease in the conversion for FYI to forty-three point three million. Okay, so basically what that was is we basically took out about a hundred and four million dollars of NHPP funding. And what we are going to do next is pretty much just replace that with a different funding source, entry eights and AC entry in two thousand and twenty-five for using discretionary grant funding. Item number nine is AC conversion for discretionary grant funding of a hundred and eight point six million. So basically, we took the hundred and four million of NHPP, replaced it with a hundred and eight million of discretionary grant funding. Both sources are eighty-twenty. And then the final line item for this project is number ten, and it is ninety-eight million of state only funding with no match. So basically, it's overall, it's an increase of about a hundred million for the project. I had talked to the project manager, and this is basically, you know, as you know, with lots of other projects, as they go from preliminary design to final design, you know, projects typically go up. There is also inflation costs since this project was started quite a few years ago. Incendials were included, and the project also does now include the replacement of the Murdoch Ave Bridge, which runs over I ninety-one. Do you have any questions?
Questions? Okay, without objection, I'll take a motion to approve items five, B one through five, B ten, project zero zero seven nine dash zero two forty.
So moved.
Dave, and second?
Ken.
Carol, any further discussion?
Me. That's okay.
I'm sorry, was that a question?
Either Carol, I seconded. I'm not sure. I didn't see Carol, but I seconded too.
Okay.
I want marks.
Thank you. Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, moving on, Rob, without objection, five, uh, B eleven and twelve project is zero one seventy dash three six forty. Rob?
Uh, yep, these two line items are a little easier. This is the Service Plaza Main Line Sign and Sign Support Replacement Project along I ninety-five and three ninety-five. We've talked about this one in the past as well. This is, uh, let me find it. There's so many. There it is, statewide project. It's on ninety-five, three ninety-five. It's project one seventy, thirty-six forty. Again, uses NHPP funding, exempt from air quality modeling, Service Plaza Main Line Sign and Support Replacements. This is for the construction phases as well. These are a hundred percent federal, so there is no state match. Basically, number eleven and twelve, they're both currently in the tip. One reason is administrative. Some of the regions that were initially included on the region column are not within the corridor. So those were removed. There were the central regions and some of the north northeastern regions, you know, which are not on the ninety-five, three ninety-five corridor. So those are taken out and also a cost revision, again, resulting in a minor cost increase, basically just as the project has moved through through the design phases.
Any questions? Okay, I'll take a motion on five, B eleven and twelve.
Make a motion.
Carol, second? Michael, okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any any opposed? Motion carries. Rob, five, B thirteen through seventeen, without objection?
Um, yep, uh, this is a new project. This is one we have not seen before. This is project one seventy, thirty-seven, fifty-nine. This project replaces and upgrades the cameras and communications equipment on I ninety-one, basically from the area between three seventy-two and Cromwell to I eighty-four in Hartford, as well as on Route fifteen from roughly the vicinity of DOT headquarters up to I ninety-one in Hartford. This, these are the currently the cameras that are there now were put in in the early two thousands. The existing equipment nearing the end of its useful life. They cannot get components and parts anymore when they are breaking and having issues. So this replaces roughly sixty-nine of the CCTV cameras in this area that have a direct link to the Highway Operations Center at DOT. These cameras are used for a variety of purposes such as, you know, weather information, crash information, basically monitoring construction and maintenance, you know, motorist information for the various message signs. So basically, it improves traffic flow and highway information and public safety. We do have, let's see here, five line items, number thirteen through seventeen. Basically reads, let's see, Cromwell, Hartford, Rocky Hill, Weathersfield, I ninety-one, Route fifteen, project one seventy, thirty-seven, fifty-nine uses CMAC funding, which is congestion mitigation and air quality funding, exempt from air quality modeling. Replace and upgrade cameras and communications equipment. They are all using CMAC funds. The first line item fifteen is for a preliminary design phase in two thousand and twenty-five for one point two million. The second, number fourteen, is for a final design phase in two thousand and twenty-six of eight hundred thousand. Uh, number fifteen is an AC entry in two thousand and twenty-seven. Number sixteen is an AC conversion in two thousand and twenty-seven for twelve point five million. And number seventeen is an AC conversion in two thousand and twenty-eight for seven point five million.
Questions?
Yeah, Rob, what's AC stand for?
Um, advanced construction, AC entry and AC conversion. It's kind of a funding mechanism approved by federal highway to kind of get projects done a little faster before the federal money is in place. Basically, DOT vouches for, you know, having the funds to approve the money before the federal money is there, which is why there's typically a zero year. So the funds or so the project can begin, and then the fund is allocated in the outer years or in that same year, which is usually why there is a AC conversion, which is the same year, the next year and the following year. If you look at like the spreadsheet that was sent out, that makes sense.
It does. Are some of these jobs in jeopardy, just like the other things that have the federal funding attached to them?
No, they shouldn't be typically. These are in the current bill, which is the bill by bipartisan infrastructure law. This bill really, I mean, is typically the federal transportation bills every five to seven years. And it's current, basically, its current state kind of began with IST in nineteen ninety-one and has pretty much every five to seven years been re, you know, reallocated. There's been some, you know, changes here and there, a couple of programs come in, a couple of programs might come out. But typically, the core has has remained, remained similar over the years.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve five, B thirteen through seventeen, project zero one seventy dash three seven five nine. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Nick Eric did. Eric seconded.
Yeah, I seconded.
Eric, any further discussion, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Um, any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Rob, other transportation updates, please?
Uh, yep, we just have a couple of quick updates. Last month, we had sent out the twenty-six, twenty-seven UPWP, which is the Unified Planning Work Program, which is the work we're going to do over the next two years using our transportation funds. Yesterday, we did receive the state and federal comments. I will incorporate that and hopefully begin the public involvement period next, next week and request endorsement at next month's MPO meeting. Next is the tip. As you know, we're currently on the twenty-five to twenty-eight tip. In the past, going kind of far back, we used to update the tip on a two-year basis that has slipped to a three or four-year basis because, you know, it's a four-year tip plus an FYI category. So we really have five. DOT does want to get back into a two-year cycle, partially because we can begin that now. And then the tip and the new MTP update won't be in the same year. We do the tip in twenty-six and the MTP in twenty-seven, so that will make things much easier for putting those together and air quality modeling. There are a few pros and cons. I guess the the biggest con would be, you know, the upfront work public involvement every two years instead of three or four. But on your end, as the MPO board, there is typically on a two-year tip cycle considerably less tip amendments because as it's updated two years, the outer years aren't changing as much. So with any, hopefully, we will get back to the two-year tip schedule. That is the goal. It will still be a four-year tip. It'll just, you know, be updated more frequently. So instead of twenty-five to twenty-eight, we'd be looking at, you know, twenty-seven to thirty, begin development on that quite soon. And the other was the State Active Transportation Plan. As you know, I've talked about that in the past, too. The state DOT has HDR as a consultant to update their active transportation plan. Early next month, they will be coming out to our region to do a, you know, a quick tour of some of the areas. And Marcos was setting that up for us, so that's great. And I think that is about all I have for other at this point.
Any questions regarding this for Rob? Okay. FTA Section fifty-three, ten prioritization. Rob, you want to explain this, please?
Uh, yep, sure. Um, let's see here. As you know, this is pretty much an annual agenda item. FTA fifty-three, ten grants have been around since probably the late seventies, early eighties. It provides capital and operating expenses to improve mobility for seniors and persons with disabilities. Funding is allocated to urbanized areas. As you know, we're in both the Hartford Urbanized Area and New Haven Urbanized Area. We do have applications in both. There is one application for the Hartford Urbanized Area that was submitted by Cromwell for a replacement bus for their senior center. And in the New Haven area, we have three applications submitted by ETD. These are for feeder service, the mobility manager position and taxi vouchers. Basically, if we could have a motion just approving that as our priority lists, I will send that after the OT.
Can I, okay, motion by Michael, can I get a second?
A second.
Carol, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. Sam, uh, you, you took the, uh, video away from me, so I don't know what's going on. Uh, I have, I have no control.
All right, I just, uh, I just asked you. Oh, no, you're, you're back.
Yeah. Um, moving on, um, thank you very much, Rob. Excellent reports as usual. Uh, Transit District, uh, Brendan?
Sure thing. Thanks, Tony. Um, so the, uh, couple, couple of things we have going on, um, first of which is our service changes. We have some planned service changes coming in May, the end of May. Um, some of the highlights are, um, some route changes, uh, through our routes, some small tweaks and changes. Our routes five eighty-two, six forty-two and, uh, route six forty-five. Uh, we're also adding Saturday service for route six forty-four, which is a route that goes from Old Sabre to Middletown. So that's exciting. There'll be some new service there for Saturday. That'll mean that the majority of our shoreline routes will now also have, uh, Saturday service, which is great. Um, we're also making some changes to flex routes, uh, to fix routes, which has some implications for ADA pair of transit versus dollar ride and other deviation routes. So some changes there. I recommend if folks want to delve more, either contact me or, uh, go on a website to find more information, but happy to go more in depth of that. We also have our electric buses on the road finally, which is great. So we have our electric buses. It took a little while to get them outfitted and ready to go, but they're now out on the roads. And I think so far we've been getting good range results. So we're seeing good range in the, on the vehicles. Our mechanic has been reporting. So that's, that's exciting. Um, we're also seeing great, great ridership or extra mile expansion, uh, particularly in Middletown. We're seeing very, very strong ridership. Uh, we had two thousand two hundred rides, uh, just, uh, not one service in February and we're looking to a similar number this month. So they're explosive, you know, over two hundred and twenty just in one day. So that's a very busy day for our two drivers, uh, handling all those rides. Mattson Guilford's doing quite well. Um, the complete steady growth and East Hampton's been doing better as well lately. So hopefully that continues. We also are working on a bus stop transition. So again, for many folks may know that we currently are a flag stop system, meaning that riders have to request a ride, uh, not a stop anywhere along the route that's safe to do so. We're looking to transition to a traditional bus stop system for improvements to safety, operational efficiency, and even honestly kind of marketing of, uh, folks with the buses available. Um, it's, you know, so we're working on that. We currently have a vendor. Uh, we're working on a contract for a vendor to help permit and install these signs. And we're currently finalizing our locations and we'll be reaching out to towns, um, uh, with bus stops and town roads shortly about, so we're, we're planning to do for those. Um, so there's some information about that. And then finally, we're, we're working with the city of Middletown, um, to have a zoning change to allow for bus shelters. We have three bus shelters, three or four bus shelters we're looking to install in the city of Middletown shortly. So uh, with these zoning changes, hopefully in May we'll be able to install them soon after that. So, um, it was some of our updates we had going on. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Brendan? Brendan, what do one of those, uh, bus shelters cost?
Yeah, good question. Um, I, I believe we, we're getting these four from the state. So luckily it's on some state time, but I believe they're what? Do I think they're around ten K? Is that right, Joe?
Uh, shelter itself, uh, yeah, they're probably around eight or nine now.
Yeah.
The most expensive part usually is the site work. It's just depends how much site work is needed. And if you have to, they have to be ADA accessible. So if you need to do some sidewalk to get to it, so, so that, that's really where you could spend the most money depending on location.
Yep. And what's nice is with these middle town locations, we'll have additional sidewalk, which is nice. So we'll be improving the surrounding area too.
Thank you. Any, uh, questions, uh? Okay, thanks. Appreciate report. Uh, Sam, letter of support for, uh, Deep River?
Uh, yes. Uh, so a, uh, a draft letter of support was sent out to you last week. Um, the town of Deep River is applying to the state, uh, state DOT's, um, Community Connectivity Grant Program. Uh, this, uh, proposal would fill in gaps in the town's existing sidewalk network. Uh, and, uh, and it would provide, uh, uh, continuous sidewalks in the center of the town. Um, uh, the, the town had asked for a letter of support, um, and that letter supports before you and, uh, um, and, uh, I don't know if, uh, if Carol has anything to add, uh, about your application.
Well, thank you. We do appreciate the support. We were told by our consultant that was helping draft that letters of support really make your application look, uh, look better. And, uh, these sidewalks are needed because we do have some gaps and we have a lot of walkers in town. You know, Deep River does have a lot of sidewalks. So we're very walkable and, um, we've heard it over the years. And so, uh, it would be great to be able to bring this money in. I think the grant or, uh, the total project cost is about, uh, nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, eight hundred and fifty-two is what I was given, um, with some wiggle room. So about nine hundred thousand. So it would complete, um, from River Street, if you're walking towards our town landing, there's a gap, uh, so that would allow people to stay on the sidewalk instead of getting on the road there, which is very narrow. And because there's a boat launch there, you know, um, oftentimes you have a big pickup truck pulling a trailer with a boat. And so people kind of have to jump into the bu- the bushes in a way, you know, so it'd be nice to have sidewalks there. And the other piece of sidewalk would be down Main Street on the, um, eastern side of Main Street. Right now there is no, no walking path on that side of the road. So if you're at our shopping center to get to the post office, let's say you'd have to cross the road, um, and then there's not another crosswalk. So we have a lot of, uh, jaywalking going on, I guess is, uh, the, the real term, but people are kind of running across the road and it's dangerous because people tend to speed on our main street, which is which Route one fifty-four. So we do appreciate the support from River Cog with this letter.
Thank you. Uh, can I get a motion, uh, to, uh, support, uh, the, the letter for, uh, who was that?
That was Irene.
Irene, thank you. And a second, please.
I'll second.
A se- second from both lines.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much and good luck, uh, Carol?
Yeah, fingers crossed. Thank you.
All right, moving on to cog business authorization, um, for a direct hire of a part-time financial assistant, uh, Sam?
Um, yeah, so, uh, in February, um, uh, we reached out to Robert Haff to employment ag- uh, yeah, agency to find some, uh, part-time assistance for Paula Fernal, our financial administrator. Uh, we were very lucky and, uh, and, uh, and, uh, we, uh, and we got a very, a very good, uh, woman. Uh, her name is Maria, um, uh, uh, how do you pronounce her last name, Paula? Uh, it is, um, I'm terrible with people's last names. It is, uh, uh, uh,
Uh, Figurado, yeah.
Figurado, yes, uh, Maria Figurado. Um, so she's been working with us for the last three months. Um, uh, we have a contract with Robert Haff that, uh, we obviously pay more than her hourly rate, um. And, uh, and since we are, uh, very happy with her work and Paula is especially happy with the support that she's receiving from Maria. Um, we, uh, we crunched the numbers and it, it made sense at this point to, um, to hire her as a full, as a part-time permanent employee of River Cog, um, and, uh, and end our contract with Robert Haff. Um, I don't know Paula, if you have anything else you want to add. She, Paula, uh, just sent out a memo. Uh, so if you check the email, there's more details in there. But, um, I don't know Paula, you want to add anything?
Um, no, just that I, I'm very happy with her. She's very detail oriented, which is important in this position. Um, she's learning quickly. She comes and asks questions when she doesn't understand. She's very easy to work with. She's a, a great add.
And, um, and so, uh, uh, we presented this to the executive committee last week and they, uh, voted to, uh, to recommend, uh, hiring of Maria from Robert Haff to a River Cog employee.
Yes, I, unfortunately that memo went out very late to everyone. It went out this morning. If you look in your emails, you'll see the memo that's part of today's discussion.
Yes, the memo is, uh, is there. Uh,
Thank you.
Questions? Okay, I don't see any questions. Therefore I'll take a motion to authorize the, uh, hiring.
So moved.
Eric, second?
Second.
Cindy.
Yep. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, cog fiscal year twenty, uh, twenty-five audit appointment, Paula?
Yes, that's, uh, just a formality for us. OPM requires every year for you to submit a form stating who's going to be doing the audit for your agency. So that's just something you need to, um, have a motion on and then I can send the form in to them.
Motion to, um,
And Paula, if you could just remind us the name of the, of the auditor, um.
Oh, Henry Raymond and Thompson, they rebranded to HRT, but it's the same firm. Um, we have a contract with them that runs through the end of this year with an extension into next year.
Motion to appoint HRT?
Don't move.
John, second?
I'll second.
Carol, any further discussion?
Um, I do have one question about this. Are we, is River Cog under the same requirement that municipal municipalities are to, um, change their auditor every certain number of years?
We are.
We are. Go ahead, Paula.
Sorry, we are not under a requirement, but that is something that the board members uh, discussed and it was decided that we do go out every few years for a new auditor.
Okay, just checking.
But I, but I will add, um, it's been tough finding auditors to do this work. Um, uh, we, uh, when we went out to bid, we did not find, uh, anyone that was more qualified or, uh, had a usable price. Unfortunately, um, there, there's not a lot of competition in this. So, um, uh, although we're not required to change auditors, um, uh, it's, uh, it would be a struggle to do that, uh, although we would, we do go out to bid. It's, um, uh, hoping that we'll find, uh, someone to switch off with.
Um, plus, uh, the problem is that, uh, a lot of these firms are combining now and, uh, it's, it's becoming extremely limited. Um, even when you go out to bid, uh, the, uh, response is, uh, is weak at best.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Say aye, aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? All right, motion carries. Um, Gateway Commission, uh, requests appointment of a cog representative and alternate. And Susie, I think, uh, you're handling that.
Oh, um, River Cog, River Cog is muted. Um,
Good morning. Um, I, as you all know, the Gateway Commission, um, contracts with River Cog for stat services. The Gateway Commission was established back in nineteen seventy-three. It is a land regulating, uh, land regulation authority in the lower Connecticut River Valley area. Eight towns have agreed to participate and, um, as a regional agency, the River Cog has the ability to appoint two representatives and two alternates to the Gateway Commission. The Gateway Commission has had an alternate and representative position vacant for several months and has found two folks who have great qualifications that meet the Gateway Commission's mission, um, that they would like the River Cog to appoint. One is Gail Reynolds and as the representative and the other is Ann Redfield as the alternate. And I'm looking for a motion to appoint Gail Rivers, Gail Reynolds as the River Cog representative and Ann Redfield as the River Cog alternate to the Connecticut River Gateway Commission.
Can I get a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Second, John. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Say aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, briefing on state draft for fair share housing study, Megan?
Yeah, um, I have a brief presentation if I could share my screen.
Well, yeah, Kevin, if you could make her a co-host.
Yep. Good to go.
Good to go. All right. Perfect. Uh, everyone can see my screen, all right?
Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so good morning. As I'm sure most of you are aware, OPM released the second part of their fair share housing study earlier this month, which allocated housing units to municipalities. We've gone through that report as well as the previous needs assessment report and put together a little update to help explain what's in them as well as our ongoing concerns and the next steps. Um, but before I start with that, I just want to put out the disclaimer that these reports are relatively complicated and I didn't write them. So I will do my best to make it as straightforward as I can and to answer questions as I'm able. So a little background first, the basis for the fair share study is the Open Communities Alliance Fair Share Model. Uh, it's a proposed bill that you probably remember that didn't pass, but it did result in section eighteen of Public Act twenty-three two oh seven, which requires OPM with DOH and DCD to develop a fair share methodology for calculating and allocating housing needs that had to be based on the Open Communities Alliance Fair Share Methodology. OPM contracted with ECO Northwest to conduct the study and make recommendation to the General Assembly. ECO Northwest is an experienced firm. They're based on the West Coast. Uh, they have done several of these studies in the past for other states. So ECO Northwest released a draft housing needs assessment in January of twenty twenty-five. The report proposed three methodologies for calculating the number of housing units the state and each region needs to produce in order to address housing needs. The first is the baseline approach. That's essentially the Open Communities Alliance model that's required by statute. And then alternatives one and two combine the same three metrics to calculate need, but they vary based on the income level that they address. And I'll go over each of these on the following slides with some graphic assistance from our own, um, Marcos Gonzalez, who did an amazing job. So as mentioned, the baseline assessment is the Open Communities Alliance model. It calculates the number of existing extremely low income households, which are those at less than thirty percent area median income who are severely cost burdened or spending more than fifty percent of their income on housing costs. Those are the only two criteria. So this resulted in a need of a hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-six units for the state and five thousand, six hundred and fifty-five units for River Cog. Keeping in mind that these numbers represent only units that are for, uh, households at less than thirty percent AMI. Interestingly, the study was only supposed to replicate the Open Communities Alliance model. However, the consultant determined that this model wasn't a great measure of housing needs, so they proposed the two alternatives. So both alternatives one and two start with a measure of underproduction. Underproduction basically says that we don't have enough housing units for our existing population when we account for things like overcrowding, household formation rates and a healthy vacancy rate to create a more balanced market. We therefore need to add new units to account for these things and create a less constrained housing supply. So this estimated thirty-six thousand units statewide and it aligns pretty well with the work that River Cog did in our housing needs assessment. Next, alternatives one and two both account for our homeless population. So the measurement says that we don't have enough housing units for our existing households experiencing homelessness. So we need to add enough housing units to account for those households. And this amounts to an additional three thousand fifteen units statewide. And again, it's consistent with what River Cog did in our methodology. Here's where things get interesting, the third and final input for alternatives one and two is what they call a structural mismatch. And this is very similar to the Open Communities Alliance model and it was kind of tacked on at the end of alternatives one and two. And it basically says that existing households are spending too much money on housing. And existing housing is too expensive for current households and you see that in the graphic on the left. What structural mismatch does is it calculates the number of existing households who are currently housed. But spend more than thirty percent of their income on housing, uh, their cost burden. And it compares the cost, that to the cost of the existing housing supply. And the comparison assesses whether there are enough units to match all households to appropriate units for their budget. The difference between the households and the units in each income bracket is added together. And then a five percent vacancy rate is tacked on to that. So for alternative one, the calculation only includes households up to eighty percent AMI. And it concluded that we needed seventy-two thousand additional housing units to correct for this mismatch. For alternative two, we looked at households at all AMI levels and this totaled an additional three hundred and twenty thousand units statewide. So despite the framing in the report, the structural mismatch calculation doesn't really tell us the number of housing units that state needs. Because these households are currently housed. The structural mismatch just tells us how many households are paying too much or in some cases too little for their housing. The underproduction and the homelessness calculations already account for enough units to enable household formation and bring the state's vacancy rate to a healthy five percent level. So calling for an additional seventy-two thousand to three hundred and twenty thousand housing units. Would disrupt the housing market and drive the vacancy rate well above the healthy five percent, which we tried to express in the graphic on the left. And interestingly, ECO Northwest agreed with this assessment of the structural mismatch. In their Oregon Housing Needs Analysis, which they also created. And so in a technical appendix for that report, they dismissed structural mismatch as a way of calculating housing needs. And they stated that it would result in an overproduction of housing. They noted that it's a useful way to understand how many households are cost burdened, but it's not a satisfactory way to understand. The number of units that are needed in the entire housing market. And those are direct quotes. So when these factors are all combined, what we see is a measure of total need for a hundred and eleven thousand households in alternative one, rather than. A hundred and eleven new housing units. Looking from the bottom left to the top right, the homeless population doesn't have enough housing, so they need three thousand fifteen units. We also don't have enough units for our existing population when we account for overcrowding household formation rates and a healthy amount of vacancy to balance market. So we also need thirty-six thousand units for that. However, in the top right, we have a large number of households that already have housing but struggle to afford it. They don't need seventy-two thousand new housing units. Instead, the evaluation can help us target price points for the other forty thousand new units from underproduction and homelessness. And it can also help us to evaluate programs and subsidies to make existing occupied units more affordable for struggling households. This distinction is not made in the report, all three items are added together for a total unit count of a hundred and eleven thousand units statewide, six thousand for River Cog. In the subsequent report, the number was increased to a hundred and twenty thousand units. Due to a slight variation in calculations, but none of the inputs changed. And when we expand the income range uh to all AMI level, that is now three hundred and sixty thousand units statewide. Or twenty-one thousand units for River Cog. And again, in the subsequent report, the number was increased to three hundred and eighty thousand units. Statewide, but none of the inputs changed. Obviously, we have several concerns with this. Um, first, the structural mismatch analysis is inappropriately presented as number of housing units needed. Um, second, the study doesn't consider future household needs, so all. All a hundred and eleven thousand or three hundred and sixty thousand units are meant for people who currently live in the state. Um, it doesn't provide a time horizon for something that is a snapshot in time, there's no guidance on. When the units need to be added or when there will be a reevaluation. Uh, the consultant was directed not to consider how the results would be implemented. The consultant's work importantly was limited by the parameters of the statute, so we don't know. If they gave us their best professional opinion, in fact, we think they did not based on what they have written in other reports. And the entire process has lacked transparency and stakeholder engagement. The more recently released report now focuses on the methodologies for allocating housing units. Uh, to the towns. So again, we have three methodologies that were proposed. The first is the baseline Open Communities Alliance model that was required by statute. The second is basically the Open Communities Alliance model with a slight twist. And the third is a completely different three-pronged approach, which I'll go over in the next few slides. So the first Open Communities Alliance model, they used the baseline determination amount, so that was um. Four households at less than thirty percent AMI. It allocates units to the towns based on municipality's share of reg, the region's valuation of taxable property. Municipality's share of regional household income differentials, the poverty rate. And the share of housing stock in a municipality that is multifamily as compared to the regional average. And it adjusts these allocations. Based on removing the highest poverty municipalities and reallocating their units to the other municipalities. And capping the number of units that any municipality is allocated. At twenty percent of the existing stock and those units are just gone, they're not reallocated. Approach A does all of the same things. Using alternative one, which was the eighty percent or less AMI measurement of need. Um, the only difference is that in approach A, they don't remove the highest poverty municipalities. And they don't cap allocation at twenty percent of the existing stock. The third, or the, yeah, the third approach, approach B uses again, alternative one, households at less than eighty percent AMI. And it disperses units based on three equally weighted measurements. The first is affordability. It's the number of units that a municipality needs to reach the regional average of housing stock that's affordable to renters at less than fifty percent AMI. So that means municipalities with higher affordable affordability rates than the regional average get a smaller share. And the municipalities with the highest difference from the regional average have the biggest share. The next is production, um, so it basically is meant to give credit to municipalities who have been producing a lot of housing. It looks at the regional average housing production over the last ten years. And allocates based on the units that municipalities need to reach that regional production rate. So again, municipalities with higher production rates will not receive units in this measurement. And municipalities with the biggest difference are going to receive the largest number of units. And then lastly, accessibility to jobs looks at the municipality's share of units. Um, based on a thirty-minute car ride or sixty-minute bus ride to jobs. Um, so accessible jobs are measured as the number of jobs accessible from all US census tracts via a sixty-minute transit trip or a thirty-minute car trip. The job totals are from the Census twenty-twenty loads data, which is the same that River Cog used in our methodology. And the report uses state job accessibility. Um, it says that limiting the number of jobs to those within a region isn't a good measure of overall accessibility. And it appears that using state data slightly changes the determination total because it's based on statewide. Need totals and it's not limited to the regional calculation. And I will pause here for a second because these are the results. Um, you can see the differences in the allocation based on the three different approaches. Note again that in the baseline, which is the third column in, the totals are smaller. But all units in the total are at less than thirty percent AMI. Again, we have several concerns, so. First, allocation, the methodology is completely disconnected from state policies and it lacks sensitivity to regional and local context. None of the methodologies reference or consider the state growth management principles, which are enshrined in statute. Or the recently adopted state CND plan, both of which provide a clear direction for how the state intends to direct growth over time. If the state is allocating tens or hundreds of thousands of new housing units to municipalities, it should align. Um. The allocation should be aligned with adopted plans and policies that have been created and adopted through a public process to ensure that growth is occurring. At the appropriate scale and in appropriate places. Uh, there's no analysis provided in the report that demonstrates that the state is targeting high quantities of new development in a responsible way. Second, the statewide allocation model, any statewide allocation model is inevitably going to struggle with capturing goals and priorities for each region. Third, using statewide access to jobs minimizes the impact of regional job centers. When looking at the maps showing the difference between statewide and regional job data. Um, the statewide approach basically neutralizes our regional job center, so all of our municipalities are treated the same. And then the rate of housing production doesn't indicate whether a municipality should be building more housing, only whether or not it is. There is currently a proposed bill, you've probably heard of it, it's HB six-nine-four-four colloquially called Towns Take the Lead. It's another Open Communities Alliance bill. It's officially titled an act requiring a municipality to include certain information in its affordable housing plan. This bill would implement the fair share study. Basically, it has several requirements, municipalities with the highest eighty percent of per capita grand list income must create what they're calling a priority eight-thirty J plan. We're not entirely sure if that's in addition to or part of your regular eight-thirty J plans. Uh, but in this priority plan, the municipality has to show how it's planning and zoning for new units, fine. Uh, twenty percent must be affordable to very low income households regardless of the results of fair share. Uh, and it has additional requirements for the number of rentals, you have to plan for the number of bedrooms that need to be in each of these. Uh, developments and the number of age restricted units that you are allowed to have. Again, we have concerns. Um, first and foremost, it prematurely implements a fair share study that is not yet completed. It assumes that the allocation models will be in place by twenty twenty-five because the eight-thirty J plans are due. Or the priority eight-thirty J plans are due twenty thirty-five and then at ten-year intervals thereafter. Uh, it includes requirements that may be contrary to the fair share study results. Um, which, again, we haven't really seen final results yet. And it requires the plan to be filed with the Connecticut Law Journal and allows an interested party. To bring in action in Superior Court for non-conformity with the requirements. And the remedy for suit is unclear, it says such legal inequitable relief which it deems appropriate. So what are we doing? First, we are expecting the release of the final study. Which hopefully has all of the back calculations as well in a technical appendix in June twenty twenty-five. The study technically needs to be approved by the General Assembly before it can be implemented, which is why we are very closely watching the Towns Take the Lead bill. River Cog has met and been meeting with the other cogs, cost and CCM, um, we are kind of coalescing around similar concerns. Um, the ones that I have gone through in this presentation, um, priority among them. And we are basically working on education, educating as many people as we can about the contents of the study, some of the concerns that are presented. And working on a unified response to the legislators. And that is quite enough for me, um. If there's any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
Thank you, Megan, excellent report, questions for Megan?
Megan, I'll, I'll just make the comment I've been making about this for, since this study came out. Uh, actually, since it was talked about several years ago. The, the low side of what Lyme is supposed to build is the equivalent of forty years of construction. Forty years, let that think, think in what they want to do to our communities.
And I, I'll just add, uh, David, um, you know, they, you know, the point that we made about how um, those numbers are not. They did not take into consideration any, uh, any facts on the ground in the different towns, the presence of. Utilities, the ability to grow, the, the desire to grow. This was, uh, they were directed to allocate a number based on this methodology by the Public Act. And I will say that, you know, they, they, their consultants' hands were tied by the Public Act. Yet, uh, yet by hiring a reputable firm, uh, they're, they're getting the blessing of this experience firm, so it's uh. It's uh, it's very troubling, uh, that it was not a, uh, a professional study, it was a, it was a study that was sort of. Uh, tightly uh prescribed in advance. Uh, and they, and they, they, what they sort of indicated, what they wiggled as much as they could in their straitjacket.
This study served their purpose.
Yep.
Questions, anyone? Again, thank you, Megan, appreciate it. Uh, moving on, um. Legislative update, uh.
Yeah, so they hear, yeah, the hearings, um, most of the public hearings have, uh, wound up for the session. Um, uh, I've, I've submitted some testimony on a couple bills just a couple weeks ago regarding. Uh, eliminating the car tax, which um, I oppose just because, uh, going into what could be a global recession. Um, it may be, uh, not the best time to, to be making the towns more reliant on state income tax and sales tax. Um, and, and also just we know from past recessions, uh, when the state is hit, uh, they cut back. Um. There was also a, a, an interesting concept for a, um, property tax homestead. Um, uh, um, uh, tax, uh, tax reduction for, uh, for primary homeowners, um. Uh, we supported it, but, uh, the testimony I submitted was that a better way of assessing this. A, a, a better way of implementing this would not be providing, um, that a homestead exemption. Instead, to, um, modify the percentage of an assessment. So right now, proper, uh, you have a seventy percent, uh, assessment, so you take the value, multiply by seventy percent, and that's what's, what's taxed. But if you wanted to do a differential, uh, percentage where for, let's say, second homes or Airbnbs. Uh, you did a eighty percent assessment or a ninety percent assessment, that would be a better way of, uh, of implementing this. Just because by doing a homestead exemption, what you're doing is you're, is you would in effect be raising taxes. On apartment buildings, on businesses, on factories, uh, when I think the intent was more. Um, to maybe, uh, raise taxes on, on, on non, uh, homeowner occupied units, uh, second homes and Airbnbs, so. Um, uh, of course, we're moving into the budget, uh, portion of the session. So they'll be able, I think they're going to be, uh, uh, you know, I think Irene can probably speak better about this than I can. But they could be focused on the budget and a lot of the oxygen on, on some of these bills will be taken, will be taken out of the room, but. Who knows what's going to happen, we're particularly concerned about this OCA bill and this draft study. Um, the timing, um, you know, the timing of the study. Seems like it should prohibit, uh, it from being adopted this year, but, uh, you could have an action where. You know, the General Assembly, uh, you know, approves a bill where this study and, and, and the OCA, uh, law. Uh, a bill mandating, um, uh, you know, implementation. Could be slipped into a budget implementer or something that, that must pass, um. I'm particularly concerned about, uh, one of the lines in that OCA bill that says that towns have to, um, provide a reasonable opportunity to build this housing. And if you're talking about housing, uh, uh, very, uh, very. And if you're talking about housing, uh, uh, very, uh, very, uh, for, housing that's affordable to people of very low incomes, you're talking about public subsidies. Um, the cost, the cost of, uh, materials and labor and land just do not provide for ability to build housing. That can rent or sell for as cheaply as, as those, uh, as those income levels need. Um, so you could have a situation where interested parties are suing towns, uh, to, to. It with the remedy being municipal subsidies. Um, if that's the case, they need to be cleared up. Uh, and furthermore, uh, in my testimony against that bill, I said that to build housing, we need partnership. We don't need lawsuits. And, uh, and, um, and I think, I think in this situation, um, you would have rent, rent seeking organizations. Filing lawsuits and, um. And tying everyone up in court and, and, and potentially, um, creating a situation that will be even worse for constructing housing. So. Uh, but anyway, th- those, those are my concerns for legislation, but, uh, if any of you hear of anything, um, please, uh, please feel to share it with me or the rest of the cog. Um, uh, we will be, uh, offering Megan's presentation and possibly Megan to the other COGS to present on the fair share housing study. The other CEOs in Connecticut need to hear about this, um, because they're not getting, they're not getting it in the press. Um, people don't understand how they're, they're adding apples and oranges together. Uh, households in need versus housing units is a two different units. Uh, when primarily the housing, uh, the people that are in, uh, uh, the, the people are housed, uh, they're just having trouble affording their housing. So, so that's, uh, so that's my report, Tony. Um, uh, and if I may, um, just make a request. We do have a representative from Demis who would like to give a Demis report, um, Olivia, um, uh, Chek, Chikuti, um, and. A Chakuti, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I have that down, Sam. I, uh, I need a motion, uh, uh. Well, let's finish up with Sam first.
Oh, sure.
Any, any questions, um, for Sam regarding, um. Uh, legislation? Okay, uh, can I get a motion, um, to add a six I, uh, Olivia from, uh, Demis, uh, to give us an update?
Motion.
Second.
Cindy Eric, okay, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
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 And the opposed? Okay, motion carries. And that will be six I. All right, uh, back to our, uh, agenda. Uh, Regional Economic Development Committee update, uh, Suzie?
Um, just wanted to let you all know that the last year has really been foundational for the R E D C. Um, we've had pretty good representation at the meetings, which is terrific. We've been focusing on learning about the economic sectors that are driving our regional economy. And, um, one of our presentations recently was from the Connecticut Main Street Center. And the Regional Economic Development Committee, um, has asked me to do some investigation to determine whether or not this would be a good option. As a regional membership, uh, which is now offered by Connecticut Main Street Center. And, um, I've been doing that investigation and I do think that's R A D C after my report next month. Will, uh, vote to become a member of the Connecticut Main Street Center. It is two thousand dollars for the region for a year. And it opens up the resources of the Connecticut Main Street Center to all of our member towns, which I think is terrific. There is also a mapping program that is, um, offered. It would be an additional, um, charge, but we could talk to them about using it. And it could, it consolidates information about specific lots. And it could be really useful for regional planning and economic development and community development purposes. So we really want to investigate this. Um, that two thousand dollars is under the cap that, um, Sam has for authorizing this. But I wanted to bring this information to you, just let you know that we are considering it. If anyone has concerns about it, please let me know. And, um, I'm happy to share any information with you all offline about what Connecticut Main Street Center might, um, offer for your towns. Um, if we are a regional member. And then in addition to that, um, just to save the date, the Brownfields Roundtable, there was a presentation at the last meeting. And the Brownfields Round, Roundtable for our region would, has been scheduled for Monday, June ninth. Middlesex, um, Community College or Connecticut State College, Community College at Middlesex is offering us free space. Which is very nice of them. And it'll be June ninth, which is on Monday. So anyone interested in learning more about Brownfields. And having the opportunity to talk to the people who are in charge of the resources at the state level. About projects that you have in your town, this is a great opportunity to do that. So watch for the more information about that. It'll be coming your way. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie. Uh, any questions? Okay, um. Natural hazardous mitigation, uh, plan, uh, update, Margot?
Yeah, so we already had our discussion at the beginning of the meeting. Um, but I, I want, what I was going to ask you about and what I'd like to still ask you about is, um, scheduling. Um, the, the first planning meeting, um, for the next cog meeting and then scheduling our individual town meetings. Um, for the first week in June and the third week in June. And, um, I, I heard what all of you said at the beginning, um, about not moving forward, but. Um, we do have our contract in place with the state of Connecticut at the moment. And scheduling these meetings would not be a huge time sink. And if the funding does come through, because we are a planning grant, I think a lot of the brick grants are infrastructure grants and building grants. Um, and I can only hope that they. Um, reconsider and, um, realize how important a planning is that for our municipalities as far as hazards go. Um, that they allow our, our, our contract to move forward. But if, if we are behind schedule now by about, uh, four months. And if we just keep moving ahead with the, the little bit of planning meetings and getting things scheduled, then. In case it comes through and we get acknowledgement of it, that we can, we can move forward right away. And, and not have, you know, be pushed further behind schedule. So I would like you to consider letting us do that and participating in that. Um, the meeting, um, for the next cog meeting with the consultant, which we have not signed a final contract with yet. Um, but we're going to at the, we were going to at the beginning of the week, um, would be an hour and a half. An, an hour to an hour and a half meeting. Um, and that would be the first planning meeting for the regional committee of which all of you are members or you're designated. Um, and as far as scheduling the town meetings, we'll be working with Eliza on, um. Uh, applying a, a simple way for you to, um, schedule that meeting. Um, through an app that will just let you sign up for meeting times. Um. And so I'd like you to consider that.
Is the vendor going to charge you for, uh, for coming to the meetings?
Um, y- yes, but we don't have a contract yet with them. Um, but I just know that from the last time we did this and from, you know, um, conversations with him. That, um, this is how we would proceed if we got, if we, the funding came through. And we decided to sign the contract, that these would be the next steps that we would take. So I'm just kind of trying to, to move things ahead without spending, uh, any money, any real money. Um, and we do have the contract with the state, so we are sending them invoices for the time that we spend currently. So.
Yeah, let's, let's get them all up there, uh, as quick as possible. All right, consensus of the council without objection. Uh, allow at least to schedule the meetings. Any objection? Okay, schedule your meetings, but be cognizant of, of any expenditures, please.
Okay.
And, and, uh, if I could add, uh, we will, um. You know, I have had some, uh, conversations with the consultant. Uh, I actually got a message from one of the consultants. Uh, the day that that, uh, press release went out, uh, and with some ideas of how we might still be able to accomplish this. Um, uh, on, on the cheap. Um, uh, so we will, uh, I think we will be working, uh, uh, coming up with some alternatives here. And bringing it to, um, the board as, uh, if we, if we do need to use some local funds to be able to make this happen.
Okay. All right, very good. Um, moving on, this is, this is update, Margot?
Um, so, uh, for Hydrilla, um, I want to let everyone know that there is a public meeting. Um, information meeting in Lyme at Lyme Town Hall tonight at seven PM. Um, it's, um, mostly concerning Hamburg Cove, but there'll be an overview of the whole, uh, connected river project. Um, and the bad news is that we haven't, the, the program did not receive the appropriations, um. From, uh, the last budget round, um, that we, uh, that we, it was five million dollars that the program didn't receive. So, um, they're recalculating what they can do in this upcoming season. We, they think that they can, um. Keep working in the areas that they worked last year. Um, as far as treatment goes, they're not really sure about that yet. Um, but they will be monitoring and, um, mon- monitoring the locations and doing as much research as possible and. Um, getting ready, uh, to further the permit process or hopefully the appropriations that we will be asking for, for next year. Um. So we're moving the, they're moving the program ahead. We're all moving it ahead as, uh, best as we can. Um, with the funding that is left over from, uh, last year. Um, and with Water Chestnut, uh, the update is that we are trying to hire a couple of seasonal, um. Interns, one we have a job offer out to, and we have a, another, um, interview tomorrow. So that program is moving ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions from Margot? Thank you very much. Um, moving on, uh, our, uh. Demis update, uh, Olivia?
Hi, good morning, everybody. Um, I know that Nicole did discuss the BRIC program early on in the meeting, so I'm not going to give an update on that. Um, but just a couple of quick updates. We are preparing our twenty twenty five Homeland Security Grant Program Budget in anticipation of the Notice of Funding Opportunity. The next R E P T Staring Committee meeting is this Friday. Uh, the Region Two ESF Six is putting on a series of three tabletop exercises to assess the mass care and sheltering capabilities in the region. The first will be May twenty first in New Haven, that's a Wednesday. And the next two will be Wednesday, July thirtieth and Wednesday, September tenth. Uh, the locations for those last two will be, uh, to be determined. So it'll be announced at a later time. Um, also, there is a Hurricanes Mean Business Flood Awareness Workshop on May seventh in Milford. For more information, reach out, um, to our Demis Region Two office. So that is it for me. Any other questions? Um, I'll be happy to try to answer them. If not, reach out to the Demis office. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Sam, uh, anything you'd like to report?
Sure, I'll just give the financial report. Um, as of March thirty first, twenty twenty five. The council had completed nine months of its fiscal, uh, year, uh, twenty twenty five, uh, budget. And overall spending is within the parameters of our adopted, uh, uh, three point two million dollar budget. Uh, a few items are, I've been running a little bit over. Um, those include, uh, service contracts and fees. That's, uh, for the financial assistance, uh, through Robert Half Agency. Um, but with the transition to a, to a, uh, to a permanent employee, uh, those fees will go away. Uh, both travel and miscellaneous expenses have been slightly over as well. Uh, but we expect to cover any of those overages with, um, other line items that are coming in under budget. Um, as of the end of March, our stiff account totaled one point eight million dollars. And our Liberty checking, uh, account balance was fifty thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. So that is my, um, my report.
Any questions for Sam? Okay, I have nothing to add at this time. So other than that, uh, other business. Our next cog meeting is virtual and it's Wednesday, May twenty eighth. Um, anybody have anything, uh, for the good of the council?
I have one quick comment on.
Sure.
The household hazardous waste. Um, just the flyers, uh, it was noted by our Public Works Director and Fire Chief that, um. Lithium ion batteries are becoming a problem. Um, and they need to be disposed of differently than your standard alkaline batteries. Um, given their flammability and their ability to be self-sustaining reactions. So, um, something that we thought should be made aware.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. And I think Janice, uh, they handle that as part of our, uh. Hazardous, uh, household waste. Am I correct, Janice?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you. Um. Anyone else have anything? Seeing none? I'll take a motion to adjourn so we can all go and enjoy this beautiful day. We'll take the rest of the day off. Move. Second, sec, uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, everybody. Have a great day. Stay safe and we'll see you next month.